Memberships do so. And so now when they go to the marketplace on our website, they'll see details about all the restaurants that we have, or all of the insurance companies that we have, whatever it might have been, but more details than just the name. So that's worked out quite well. And it reduced our membership management expenses. They cut it in half every year. So that was a good, a good thing for us to do. I think two years ago, we introduced the Chamber, our new investment and benefit structure. And we had introduced a small business entry level to allow a small business to get some of the benefits of Chamber membership at the start of their business journey at a reduced rate. So a new business, an entrepreneurial business comes in, they want to be a part of the Chamber, get a ribbon cutting, get people introduced to their business. We do that at a reduced rate for their first year. And everyone that's gone through that has then come back and gotten the regular membership the following year. So we continue to grow the Chamber through new membership and providing value and opportunities to our members. We continue to process e-community loan applications during the year. And we expanded this capability through all of Butler County with the exception of Augusta. This expansion obviously is in concert with Network Kansas and Grow Kansas to develop loans for women and minority-owned businesses, entrepreneurs, and rural, rural businesses. As I said, it's for everybody except Augusta. The reason is Butler County has two Network Kansas representatives. It's us. We represent the whole county. And Augusta just represents Augusta. We're working with three new e-community loans right now. So we're hoping for that expansion to occur. But we experienced our first default with the closing of the Fund Center, who still had an open loan with us, and our first red mark since, since we started the program. We had the largest annual dinner yet called Taking Flight in El Dorado. We also had a successful Mayor's Prayer breakfast, Back to School breakfast, and our very first charity softball tournament. We teamed with Butler Community College and brought ESPN Wichita to Willie's and here in El Dorado. Had a great day. We had a full house for three or four hours at Willie's while several interviews were going on. And it brought some, some notoriety to, to El Dorado, which was a lot of fun to do that day. We had our second mud volleyball tournament to kick off the Gold Fest, something that I think the commissioners maybe ought to get a team for next year. We had our .64 chalk walk to support the Chamber Scholarship Fund. We also had a successful Festival of Reeves. And for the second year in a row, we were able through our efforts to put 90 more Reeves on veterans' graves through the Reeves Across America Program. Had a great Celebration of Freedom Parade. And our Celebration of Freedom War Dogs versus the Walnuts, dressed in the Celebration of Freedom jerseys for that baseball game. And we were the only community that received a War Dogs jersey, which is framed. I put a label on the bottom of it. And now at the end of the bar there at Willie's. So if you're ever interested, ever in there, take a look at that War Dogs jersey. It's, it's pretty, pretty cool. We had a successful decoration exchange, second one that we did, where we invited the community to clean out their garages, clean out their basements, attics with old Christmas decorations. And then we invited those who otherwise wouldn't have celebrated a good Christmas to come in and pick out decorations and decorate their homes for the, for themselves and for their children. Everything that you see in these pictures plus more was gone by the end of the day. We have a small bucket with just a couple of inches worth of, of stuff. And that was it. So it's all gone. We developed and started Fuel El Dorado for our young professionals to focus, unite, engage, and lead. Focus on the things that are important to the young professional group. Unite the community in helping to resolve what some of those issues might be. Engage local government, county government, state government, and the not-so-young professionals like me. Learning our perspectives. Have we been through that before? What did we do? What worked? What didn't work? And then lead. Lead, lead your group to solving some of those things that, that you think would make El Dorado better. So they're, they are committed to fueling the city's growth by supporting local endeavors, fostering community connections, and developing leadership and learning opportunities. And they've already doing that. Had an AI learning opportunity just last week. So guided by those values, then, they're actively contributing to the vibrant leadership and business community in El Dorado, fueled by that next generation professionals. So I hope I see somebody from this group as the next mayor or as the next commissioner. And I hope that evolves in their leadership capabilities. We conducted our first youth entrepreneurial challenge. We assisted the chief with the opioid task force. And of course, we are a board member of the Kansas One Shot Turkey Hunt. We performed several, performed several ribbon cutting celebrations for new members or members who had moved to a new location. We hung our signs on businesses every month for the Business of the Month celebration. We held legislative coffees and election debates. We expanded our business resources on our website to include information that would help support entrepreneurs, veterans, and senior citizens. And of course, we expanded our website to include all that opioid task force information so that people knew exactly where to go to get that kind of information. We presented our first scholarship checks to a graduating senior at El Dorado High School and Circle High School in partnership with the Central Kansas Community Foundation. That was a lot of fun. And they had to work hard to earn those scholarships. We marketed and scheduled the Civic Center. That revenue line is what we collected and we paid to the city each month for rentals at the Civic Center. The city use side is what was used and fees were waived because it was the city or city waived rentals. And those costs are based on, well, if they had to pay the same thing someplace else, what would that have been? And so you can see the value of, of what we were to be able to bring in at the Civic Center once we took it over, over the scheduling in March. So plans for this year. We're holding our second youth entrepreneurial challenge for Butler, Butler County High Schools. We invited every high school in Butler County except for Rose Hill and except for Augusta. So we have three schools coming. Andover, El Dorado, and Circle. And so business plans for 16 businesses were submitted on last Monday. And they're being stored by individuals of the Fuel El Dorado team. Trade Show is this Wednesday at the Civic Center. And so we'll have those businesses doing their presentations. The judges walking around, members of the public who are invited. You all are invited to come and, and see what these young entrepreneurs are thinking about and some of the business plans that they put together. And the winner goes on to the Kansas Entrepreneurial Challenge at K-State later, later this spring. We're facilitating meetings with business owners and management on homelessness in El Dorado to convince, to conceive a business solution that the Chamber can recommend to the city commission on behalf of our El Dorado businesses. They don't feel comfortable one by one coming in here and telling you what they believe you should be doing about the homelessness issue. So we're getting together, trying to create a recommendation. And that's going to come along with several meetings going forward. We need to better understand how homelessness affects our business community. So we're going to be the voice of that business community in developing that solution, that recommendation, that include a continuum of care while maintaining a sense of compassion. So we're talking to Humankind Ministries. I have been talking to Humankind Ministries in Wichita. I've been watching events in Oklahoma City and Lawrence and Newton, other communities. So just trying to get a better understanding of how homelessness affects business. We'll continue to support Chief Holden and the Opioid Task Force. We had a great presenter here last week, Tony Hoffman. Really got those kids interested. Really got them engaged in opioid abuse. His story about opioid abuse and his recovery. He's been sober since 2007. Amazing story and took a number of questions in both sessions from kids. And you could tell some of those kids had been impacted by his story. So we want to continue to support Chief and that, that task force. We're hoping to get approval for an MOU with USD 490 pretty soon, next month, I hope, on the Chamber's use of the Performing Arts Center to bring concerts to El Dorado. And I'm already partnering with the Rogue Artist Group in Tulsa to attract visitors to our venue. It's the same promoter that does the Fox Theater in, in Hayes. And been very successful in bringing smaller, but maybe getting to just be known so that we can bring people to El Dorado, eat at our restaurants, shop at our shops before and after concerts that we might be bringing here. Also have a partner in Channel 12 helping us out with this, introducing me to some of the people that, that, to the Rogue Artist Group to be one. But they've also volunteered to shoot us 15-second promo shots during the news or doing some of their programming to say, hey, someone's coming to El Dorado. And we'll work on a percentage basis rather than a fixed fee. Because on a percentage basis, those bands themselves promote themselves wherever they're going. With a fixed fee, they don't do it. So in that, we'll include some fees for ourselves as well as perhaps some food vendors that might come along as well. We'll continue to participate in the Chamber of Commerce Executives of Kansas. A great group, Chamber executives from all over the state. We, we get together once a year and very, very enlightening, especially for a guy who never ran a Chamber before. But one of the things that I learned up in Manhattan this last year was the SOAR process. This SOAR process model is the appreciative inquiry as to a strategic plan, for lack of a better term. Yeah, we still look at strengths. We still look at opportunities. What can we build on? And what are our stakeholders asking for? But we also look at aspirations. What do we deeply care about? Where do we want to see El Dorado in the future? And rather than just talking about it, part of this inquiry produces expectations and results. What do we want to achieve and when? How do we know we succeeded or not? This model is great for nonprofits. I'll give you that. But rather than a SWOT analysis where we look at strengths, weaknesses, an internal view, opportunities and threats, an external view, this actually brings us together and says, here's what we think we want to do as a group. And we need this SOAR process to have results. We know we achieved those things at this time and when these things happened. Very important process. I'm hoping to bring all experienced El Dorado, the Chamber Board, Main Street Board, Inc.'s Board, and you together so that we can perhaps go through this process later on this, this spring to produce a relook at the strategic plan for all of us, getting us all headed in the same direction with the same goals, just staying in our lanes. We've got all these organizations looking for sponsorship dollars all the time. And we're sponsoring the hell out of this town to death. So we need to walk wisely, walk carefully, walk together in trying to achieve what it is we want to achieve as individual groups. We're developing a partnership with KTA. KTA is now a partner level with the Chamber of Commerce. They'll be sharing information on the Turnpike Cashless Tolling at some of our Chamber events. I've also shared with them a number of our members and non-members, connections that they wanted to make with Civic and large organizations here in El Dorado, people who use the Turnpike, truck, truckers who use the Turnpike to begin that relationship. And they've already started meetings individually with the Turnpike. And that was great to see. But it gives them better knowledge about conditions of the Turnpike and the cashless tolling as well. And occasionally they'll come in and provide free K-Tags at certain events during the year as well. We were selected to participate in the HF Sinclair Community Advisory Panel. And one of the roles we'll have there is keeping the business community aware of the turnaround activity. Keeping our businesses aware of, make sure you have plenty of food and plenty of people to serve. Make sure you have plenty of rooms and rooms are ready. Make sure your shops are ready with people because you're going to see more traffic. Keeping them aware of when the big load will come in. And because they only have so much time to eat, own so, so much time to shop. And so we're going to be serving that role as a part of that organization. Later next week, we'll have our next annual dinner called the Field of Dreams. We'll have our Chamber chats, Chambers After Hours, Grow the Visibility of Fuel El Dorado, Celebration of Freedom Committee, and our ambassadors. And we'll develop and distribute the new Chamber Gazette. Just a two-page monthly newsletter that we put out in this form, in paper form, and put out at the banks and coffee shops and alike. And in this one, in February's issue, I outlined the, the different roles of the Chamber, Experienced El Dorado, Main Street, and El Dorado Inc. Because so many people think we're all one. Or so many people don't understand what one does versus another. So this was put out to help examine that and explain that. Celebration of Freedom Committee will present a service dog to a veteran during the War Dogs Walnut Game on, on July 4th through a grant that we had received, just received from HF Sinclair. So we're excited about that. We'll continue our advocacy efforts for member businesses and develop new networking events. And of course, we're going to continue to support the One Shot Turkey Hunt. We'll assist with Main Street, with the city and planning for a downtown music system that we hope will come in 2025. January receipts for the Civic Center were $2,900. And we'll continue to market and grow the usage of Civics, of the Civic Center. And we'll update businesses on the base grant project. We've already sent out messages linking them to the city website that Scott puts together on that central project. So as that thing goes along, we'll keep pointing them to theirs because that's where the most updated information's going to be on that project. We'll be recruiting new members and active participants in Chamber committees. And believe me when I tell you, I get them as young as I can find. We'll develop alternate sources of revenue without being viewed as always fundraising. And this is a real trick. Chamber should have a balanced portfolio, membership versus other activities, non-duse revenue. That's why we're doing things like the PAC. Things we do, like doing the .64, some of those things. But it's always a juggling act to try to maintain that 50/50 blend. It was way off balance three years ago when I got here. And I said, we can't survive like that. So it is in balance right now. We want to keep it that way by doing some of these other activities. We'll continue to partner with other organizations to enhance the position of El Dorado for more business success, tourism, and revitalizing the downtown district through the SOAR process. We're hoping that that will produce some things that we can focus on in the revitalization of downtown. I'd like to see some new businesses come to El Dorado and providing access to new markets. Why not have a satellite office in El Dorado? Access to new markets. Why not? We should market that. So we're going to plan to do that. And then we'll be further defining and clarifying the role of the Chamber in El Dorado so that we stay in our lane and we enhance the capability for our businesses and for the city of El Dorado. That's it. I hope that was under 10. Do you have any questions?
I want a copy of the newsletter.
Is that your local bank or at your coffee shop?
My coffee pot's in my kitchen.
Okay. Then when I get invited over to your house, I'll bring one with you.
This got awkward fast.
Thank you, sir. If there's no questions, we'll move on to public comments. These are for persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission. May do so when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personal matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. Do we have anybody?
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Fellers. I live at the north end of Chelsea Drive. So I really is going to come in this morning. I really wanted to talk about Roses and Sunshine. And I'll get to that point. But my daughter came today. She just got off work. She's a nurse. And I was watching the kids because there was no school today. Now her year and a half-year-old goes to daycare. And she had a really, and so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you this because you're going to hear it. And this is where, boy, I just really think we need some help here in El Dorado. We've talked about daycare before. She had a distressed look in her face. And she said, Dad, my daycare is closing. And so she was very distraught. And we talk about bringing young professionals. And what about the young professionals right here in the community that we could use? And so anyway, I know that can't be solved overnight. I know that's not just an El Dorado thing. It's all across the state and nation. But maybe you could focus some of your times and energies on that. So anyway, I always want to help my daughter out. So anyway, let me talk about the Roses and Sunshine. So let me compliment the city on many things they are doing, have done. City manager Dillner's, I watch all your stuff. I don't know how many people watch it. I watch it all on YouTube. It's good. It's informational. I like your civic lessons. I hope people are looking at that. It's probably, it probably goes on Facebook too. I'm not on Facebook. But I think that's a, a great service. And that's how I keep up when I can't be here. So thank you for doing that. The newsletter that comes from the city, inside my utilities bill, it's always good. I know you can find that online too. The city's new website is awesome. I really appreciate that you guys have given people an opportunity on the last sales tax round where they could take their million dollars and, and vote like that. I think that is totally awesome. The paper's being revived. I've been watching people or city leaders and what they're talking about. So that's very, very cool. So I do have an item that is a long time that was in the making. Probably started about three years ago. And the sales tax funds did pay for it. And that's the Chelsea sidewalk. So I live down there. And all the neighbors got together. And we kind of talked about it. Sure would be nice to have a sidewalk. I know that Mr. Rickert, probably three years ago now, put it on the roll to, to consider. And that is used by kids going to the Activity Center. That is used by bicyclists. It connects the bike path. Going down Country Club, kids sometimes if they walk, which most parents don't do that. It gives kids an opportunity to come down there. And they should see it. And they can walk through there, up through the parking lot of the high school. There's a crossing guard. And so some kids go to Grandview. So anyway, the sales tax dollars are, are much appreciated. I know that was a, a smaller project. And you know, we've done big ones. That's awesome. I do want you to be mindful to continue to think about the smaller ones. It just about didn't make the docket. And there was some discussion. And then I know that Commissioner Wilkinson actually put us over the top. And I appreciate that on the vote. It was a split vote whether they're going to do that or not. But it's a totally awesome thing. And so I do appreciate everything the city's doing. And I appreciate you as Commissioners because I know how much time you put in. Because I know what you do. And I know the work sessions. I know the committees. And I know that really financially, you're only compensated about a good meal out once a month. So I do appreciate that. I, I think in the future, we really should consider increasing the pay for Commissioners. Because it's very low. And I think that would encourage others to run and maybe some of you all to continue. Because you know, it's, it's a lot of work. And it shouldn't just be all voluntary. And for what you're getting paid, it's about voluntary in my mind. So somewhere, somehow, I think we should, we should look at that and increase pay for city Commissioners of El Dorado. And thank you for your time.
And would you recommend a 93% raise in my pay?
Well, so 93% of yours, actually, I would recommend doubling. Not, not 93, 100%. Because I know what you all get paid. And, and that is still probably not enough. Because when you double 1,000 or 1,500, that's not that much. When you double 20,000 or 25,000, that's more. It's a percent increase. Yeah. So yes, in your case, I would.
Thank you.
C.L., thanks. We appreciate your time. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. The approval of city commission minutes from January the 16th, 2024. City commission work session minutes from January the 31st, 2024. And city commission meetings from February the 4th, excuse me, February the 5th, 2024. And then we have the approval of the appropriation ordinance, number 01-24, in the amount of $1,581,287.96.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approves. I do not see any old business. So let's move on to new business. New business is the consideration of the annexation of the property located in the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 9, Township 26 South, Range 5, East Butler County, Kansas. Scott, are you the ones going to talk to us about that?
Yes. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, before each notice and ordinance for consideration, extending the city boundary, our city limits, and looking at taking in approximately 78 acres. This property is located just west of Butler Community College's campus and just south of Tuanda Street. You will see the, the dark, the darkened line area. That is the 78 acres in question. Mr. Wes Struthers has petitioned the city commission for consideration of annexation. With that, he has the hopeful intent of some residential development there. So first step tonight is consideration of the annexation and is bringing this property within the city of El Dorado's city limits. In your packet, you've got a location map showing you that acreage as well and, and the ordinance. Mr. Struthers is here this evening as well as some of his agents that are working alongside him on this project. For his path forward, tonight's annexation, we may have the consideration of rezoning in front of the Plating Commission. The applicant's considering R3 zoning. It's kind of not relevant tonight, but just to give you that information now. That's a multifamily housing. And then ultimately, through the process of plating and internal improvements, so roads, infrastructure, water lines, sanitary sewer lines, drainage, that stuff will be presented to you as it comes. The first step is to bring the property within the city limits. And then those next steps can occur.
Scott, is there any downside to this?
Well, like in the memo, there's always things to consider. So city commissions, you know, consider things like impact to city services. So not only utilities, but your fire department, your police department, your trash service. Those sorts of things are things to consider. But also you take in that, the other hand, development, the potential development, more residences, hopefully more tax revenue, those sorts of things. So you, you kind of weigh that impact.
This that you included in our packet, all these yellow lines?
Yes.
Is that the current city limits?
Correct.
And why did we island, I mean, the house is on Tuanda. Why didn't we include that when we did those? Just out of curiosity.
So there, there's only certain ways that a city can annex. There's only certain ways that a city can annex, and there's... The easiest way is by petition, I want to be in the city of El Dorado city limits. The property on to the west, College Acres subdivision, was in the county, that was a parcel, that was a bunch of residences that were required to annex into the city of El Dorado due to sewer issues on a private lagoon they had that was failing. So that's why you don't see the proactive going out and annexing land unless there's a need or there's a use or there's a purpose.
I find our city limits interesting. I'm assuming this is the same property that came before us before?
For the MIH.
Okay, yeah, okay. Eddie nodded his head at me, so we're good.
Scott, I have a question, this is my big dumb question, is that the, like, the proposed plating?
It's a conceptual layout, kind of a rendering of what it may look like.
And the reason I ask is it looks like the land's going through, like, halfway through certain zones or certain...
Yeah.
How does that work?
Are you talking here?
No, that left line, I guess it'd be the far west side, yeah. If you go down there, like, it goes halfway through some of those lots of land, how does that... How does that work?
Yeah, I may have them talk about their intent. This area up in here would be what would be a Phase 1, so that would be platted. Think of this as a rendering, kind of give you a context of what they would hope an ultimate build-out would look like. So obviously, they couldn't plat lots over here unless it was in the city limits, so additional annexations would occur.
Are those plots over here, south of the houses that are already on Tuanda?
Correct.
Yeah, that's where it had to be.
I was trying to figure out all that, that's the white stuff.
The lake right there where you see the...
The lagoon, the lake.
Pretty good size, lake is right behind this house.
And there's approximately around 50 lots up here, conceptually kind of laid out, so that is a lot, quite a few lots.
So is 50 a good round number for what they think of in terms of houses they would be adding?
I may have, yeah.
Same city. So we're going to open this first part up in phases, on the 50 lots, depending on how the help from the city and the state works out with the specials is going to determine how many were to open up in the first section. It could be less than that, it could be a portion of that. To speak on the 80 acres that we're going to annex in, we just wanted to annex this 80-acre tract in and not the whole entire thing, obviously, because there's no need to bring that into the city right now for tax purposes, so we're just doing a...
Is all of that still owned by...
Same person, all the same person. So we're going to do the 80-acre strip, once we start developing down, then we'll annex in the portions of it going west all the way over to Boyer Road.
Gotcha.
So I thought at one time that was owned by a consortium of families?
It used to be, yes, no longer.
So you guys finally got somebody to get together on that?
Apparently they did, all 500 of them.
God.
The poor system did that.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I ended up over it.
So, anyway, I don't want to be here any longer than y'all have to be here.
I have one more question, you said R3, which is multifamily, are you thinking duplexes, townhomes, like...
Right, twin homes, basically over on the east side, which you really can't see in your map, but it's red.
Oh, yeah, you can, you can see the...
Can you see the red portion of that? So we're thinking twin homes over there on the far east side, and then single-family housing all on the rest of it.
Okay.
And that R3 zoning is the most flexible residential zoning we have.
Sure.
So it allows them to say, "Okay, the market right now is dictating we need X," so to plan for it, versus...
Being stuck on twin homes or...
Sure, okay.
Thanks, Eddie.
All right, you bet.
Other questions or discussion?
Just, and just to introduce a future agenda item you're getting ready to see here shortly, is there's a petition for an annexation for all of the property north of Tuanda Street as well, so everything outside of that.
Yeah, that's over by...
Is that going to be south of Walmart, that area?
South of Walmart, all the way to Tuanda.
Wow.
So I just bring that up for your decision-making tonight, that it will kind of fill in that whole area.
Wow.
Is there an ordinance number tab?
Oh, it shouldn't be written, just approve ordinance, approve and ordinance is how it should say.
Oh, it says number tab.
Are you... Do you want to do the motion?
Well, he was wanting to speak, can I add?
Yeah.
Eddie, do you guys have something you want to add?
I don't think so, he was just had a question, I think we answered it.
Oh, okay.
Did he get it answered?
So we're ready for a motion.
Okay, so you said just to say an ordinance, not, no number?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve an ordinance for annexation of that property you want me to list that? The whole thing, property? Do you need that? You didn't write it on there, do you want me to do it?
It's off in the subject line.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, do you want me to do it? Okay, I'm going to start over. Okay, I move to approve an ordinance for consideration of the annexation of the property located in the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 9, Township 26 South, Range 5 East, Butler County, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And I do not see any additional new business, and it says we have no discussion items, so that'll move us on to City Commission and Advisory Board updates. And I guess I can start off, we had an Experience El Dorado meeting here the other day, very encouraging, looking to the forward about where we're going to go and what's going on with the goat festival and all the things that were happening. I think we got a good start, and hopefully we'll be bringing something forward here before too long to say, "Here's what we're really looking at." So, very good. And then I'll be meeting with Parks and Rec, that's this weekend, is that tomorrow night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay. So, Kevin?
A lot of report is not met, so I have nothing to add.
Okay. Skri?
None of my things have met.
Okay, how about you, Aunt Liddy?
Well, since the mayor's not here, I guess I have to... I did appreciate your municipal minute today that explained what EFABC stood for and the partnership, and hopefully people read that, because it is, it's just a real short minute explaining exactly what EFABC is. We talked turf and track, Green Bush, if you're into education, you understand Green Bush is a cooperative that helps people get bids, and they chose three, and we are... We had a walkthrough, were you in that?
No, last week.
Was it last week? And they came over, the three companies, and looked at exactly what it was we were talking about to understand the area involved. We are asking for a bid that includes the turf and the turf and track, so we're talking two different bids. We want them to be turned in by March 6th, which is pretty quick, and EFABC will meet the following Wednesday to get a rough draft of the bids, and then give Butler and USD 490 and the city more time to actually dig into the generalities of the bids themselves as comparison, and then give us the one they think best meets, what it is that Butler's and 490 are looking for. So that'll happen later on in March. Yeah, that's basically what we did.
Thank you.
Turf and track.
Turf and track, sounds like someplace to eat.
Turf and track.
David?
In relation to that project, city staff will be meeting with our block council tomorrow to kind of map out the process for issuing bonds and the financing mechanism for the stadium, so we'll start those conversations as well. What that means is that here in the near future, there'll be some agenda items for you all to consider as well, as we get ready to do that part of the process. As Commissioner Wilkinson mentioned, we had three bidders that showed up to the mandatory walkthrough, you had to be pre-qualified to do that. Through Green Bush, I think they maybe had six, but three, only three showed up, so we'll see what happens with that. Let's see, Central Avenue project, I think bidding will be taken place soon, and then once those bids are done, they'll be brought to you hopefully by first part of May, or, I mean, sometime in April, I think.
Closer to May, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have that. We are planning on May 1st to have the engineer come and provide overview to the commission so that you all know what happens, the project's going to be phased through the corridor, which is a pretty busy corridor, that'll give you an opportunity to understand how it's going to be phased, you'll also have an opportunity to ask questions. But we're going to wait until May, so we have our contractor on board, and there'll be some details that we'll coordinate with them to make sure that we have kind of their construction schedule done with that as well. The Cost of Rate project is going to be bid about the same time as well. We've kind of got a couple of things that are not quite completed but are moving forward, which will hopefully be completed here near or soon. First of those easements, we have a couple of easements that we need to secure, there are two property owners that we need to acquire those easements from, they live in two different states, and making matters even more complicated, they have decided to sell the properties at the same time, so we're kind of working through that, but once we have those easements completed, that would be good. And the property owners have consented already to the fact that they want to give these easements to us, but complicating matters is the fact that they're listed for sale and how that works in, and the fact that they're in different states to get those signatures. We also have to do an archaeological investigation, if you will, on a portion of the project. We don't anticipate that that will take very long, but we're waiting on the easement to get that cleaned up, and once that's done, we'll have the archaeological approval and we can move forward. And then finally, the third thing is the Santa Sewer crosses the BNSF right-of-way, that crossing was approved in 1956. Unfortunately, we are upsizing the pipe that's under the railroad, and they consider that not maintenance, but an upgrade, and so as a result of that, we have to get a new permit, which requires a BYB NSF, and so we're hoping that we can get that completed and the permit issued within the next 30 days. But if not, we have an alt bid in the bid documents so that we can move forward with the rest of the project, and then once we have the final on that, we can come back and get that completed as well. So we aren't anticipating any delays with respect to that project. The Transcription Master Plan is currently in the public engagement phase, we've mentioned that several times in this meeting, but that will be going through, I think, the end of March, so we're encouraging citizens to go online, and if they have not completed the survey yet, to do so, we've also submitted information to the schools, and they've distributed it for us as well to all of our families in the school system, so we get input with respect to that as well. Scott, how many people have taken that in so far?
They were going to update me in the morning, just shortly after we had the meeting at the Civic Center, within that week, there was about 90 that completed the survey. Kindly enough, the Chamber is promoting that as well, along with Main Street in their promotion efforts too, so we need a lot of input, that's what's going to guide that thing.
We talked about housing's night, El Dorado Inc. is currently developing a draft or H.I.D. policy, we'll start doing that here the next couple of weeks, we'll get that for approval, and then it'll go to the commission for consideration and approval. That incentive will be pretty important for not only this development, but other housing developments that will have infrastructure needs associated with them, so that'll be coming up soon. As far as the newspaper goes, the mayor and I met with a gentleman from the newspaper this past week, and one of the things that we discussed was how to move forward amidst that conversation, and we had kind of come to a conclusion that the best way of proceeding is to designate the city's website as the official publication of the city, so that we can continue to use that, and we can control that environment, and so we can make sure that we get things published on the website as needed, but then continue to publish things on the news, in the newspaper, to provide that means of notification to the community. Right now, if we pass, if the commission passes an ordinance, we forward a summary ordinance to the newspaper, and so that minimizes our publication costs to the greatest extent possible. And then there are some things that we just can't, we have to publish in the newspaper, for example, if we issue bonds, that has to go through the newspaper as well. So it's not necessarily, I guess it's not a cost-saving initiative as much as it is a means of providing communication via our website and the newspaper, so I think it's a good, well-rounded compromise for everybody involved. Finally, the, as part of the strategic discussion that the commission had last work session, we will bring to the commission a series of work plans with respect to each of those strategic priorities. The first of those will be housing, and that will be on the February 28th work session, so we'll kind of outline the work plan that we see at staff, and then if you all have changes or different thoughts, we can get those incorporated as well. And then we'll do the economic development one tend to lead on March 13th, and then the collective life one will follow thereafter, so we'll be bringing those to you here over the next couple of work sessions. So, if you'd like that?
Thanks, Dave. Consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.